Good morning and welcome to the 227th Annual Town Meeting of the Town of Durham. I'm Gary Wood. I was elected yesterday as your moderator, and I'm just going to take a moment right now to introduce Joshua Klein-Golden. Did I get that right? Joshua's over here. He has been willing to come forward. He is a resident of Durham and a lawyer in Lisbon. And he is at Lisbon or Lisbon Falls?
Lisbon.
All right, Lisbon Falls. That's closer. He's been willing to come forward and phase in, and we will start next year as a potential moderator for you. I can still jump up and off the stage, but, you know, any time now, that's not going to happen. So, he's going to work with us next year, and he'll run some articles for you, and get to meet some of you folks, and hopefully that will help with the transition to this very valuable and important position that I've been privileged to hold for about 34 years now. So, Joshua, thank you for coming today. Congratulations again on the birth like two days ago of his daughter. And he was good enough to come here today and introduce you. We do have some announcements, and what I'm going to do first is ask for the Pledge of Allegiance. Then we'll have Pastor Ron Parker do the prayer for us, and then we'll have some more announcements. So please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands: one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Parker.
Before we pray, I just want to mention, we're going to have a car show in Durham here at Shiloh Chapel, June 4th, and that's to benefit the Lakewood Food Pantry. I think there's probably people still in our community that do not know, we have a food pantry in Lisbon Falls that services the towns of Bowdoin, Lisbon, and Durham. It's run by nine churches. We don't know how to agree on doctrine, but we know how to serve food. So, that's how it works. But that car show is to benefit, all the proceeds will benefit the Lakewood Food Pantry. So if you want to mark that on your calendar, June 4th, Shiloh Chapel, pray for sunshine. Before we start, it's good to remember people that have been here and have served our community through the years. You see in the book here, the dedication, and those four people are very special. We remember them at this time. And I think as we remember them, we need to remember their families that go through the process of grief and loss and adjustment. You know, I think Connie would have liked to have been here today, but she misses her husband. It's just not the same. And for each one, they are going through a time of adjustment. A lot of you, of course, remember John White. He was our administrative assistant for nine years. He just recently passed away on March 25th. So we want to remember these people. So before I pray, let's start with a moment of silence together, please. Lord God, as we gather here this morning, I thank you for the blessings that we have in place right now. This facility to use, the freedom to use it. This is a remarkable process where we have a chance to come together and talk about these issues that are so important to us in this community. I thank you for this community. I personally have seen your blessing on us as a community, and we can't take our freedom for granted. I pray for the troops, both at home and overseas, that are working hard to guarantee our freedoms. We live in a world that's so desperately in trouble and does not understand the value of freedom. Thank you we have this day together. Lord, bless us as we go through this process today. A lot of items here, they affect every one of us as taxpayers. We have differing opinions on what should or should not happen. So I pray you'll bless our dialogue and discussion. May we be able to be respectful to each other and listen even to those that we may disagree with, to hear their point of view. And then when it's all said and done, we're still neighbors together. We're still here, living together in this great town. So just bless all that transpires here today. May it happen to your glory. Lord, you're good to us. I see your goodness all around us. As I mentioned, we remember these families that have lost loved ones today. Some, of course, are not mentioned in the town book, but there's still that loss. We pray for comfort and peace for those that need it. We pray for your blessing on our newly-elected officials as they seek to serve this community. May they do it with grace and dignity in your enablement. So we just ask for your presence and blessing here in all that we say and do. And I say this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Parker. Appreciate your remarks and the thoughts for those folks who aren't here any longer. And for Connie, who is still with us but not here today, this is the first time she has missed a town meeting in 52 years. So, some of you have a long ways to go to break that record, but some of you are getting close. So with that, I'll introduce Liz Fisher, who's, Lee Fisher, I'm sorry. I know Liz Fisher. Lee Fisher, who's going to just speak to us briefly about the Denise LaFlemme Scholarship effort.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So when I think of tenacious, I think of my good friend, Terry Kirk. And when I think of someone who's hardworking, well, gosh, Corey Holt, you're right in front of me. When you think of someone who's had to work hard all their lives and just really gets up every day and jumps out of bed and goes after it, you also think of Denise LaFlemme, who served our community for years. Born here, grew up here, raised her family here, PTA president, selectman for years, substitute teacher here for over 20 years. And when we lost her to pancreatic cancer, I know a lot of you were probably just as sad as we were, and it was tough. So we created a scholarship in her name. To raise the money for the scholarship, we made a quilt. Every dollar from the quilt raffle goes to help a kid from Durham, Powell, or Freeport, who's like the rest of us. Gets out of bed every day, gives it our all. Last year, it was a young lady who was born in China. She was adopted, came here, and during her high school career, went to three different high schools. So you can just imagine the change that happened at that time in her life. Well, she is now going to Wheaton College. She has a $1,200 scholarship, and nearly every dollar of that $1,200 scholarship was raised by the people of Durham. So, thank you. And Bob Small just handed me a $5 bill, and he challenges everybody else. Give me a dollar. If you don't have any money on you today, give me an IOU. I probably know where you live. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lee. All right. Now for some more business announcements. There are two handouts. If you didn't get your annual report, there are some right over on the left-hand, my left-hand corner of the bleachers. And there is a publication from the Durham Fire and Rescue Apparatus Committee. It's their report on E-22, and it talks about the fire truck that they're asking for money to buy. So make sure you get those handouts. Now, to the meeting itself and how we run it, I'm just going to take a couple of minutes to go over things that I think have worked well, let you know the basic ground rules. I appreciate Pastor Parker's comment, particularly about when you come to the mic, you're going to speak to a motion that's on the floor or make a motion if we haven't got one. We will in general have motions, and I'll talk a little bit about that. But please keep your remarks focused on the item before the town. Don't make them personal as to the former speaker or somebody who's right behind you. It doesn't really help the townspeople in deciding how to vote to say, "Well, that person needs to, you know, go away and shouldn't live in Durham," who just spoke. And what people want to know is whether you're in favor of a motion or against it, and the reasons for your position. This is your meeting, and I do my absolute best to make sure that you all are welcome and feel comfortable here and willing to speak and come to the mic to do that. So as the meeting goes on, we will have to use the microphone. You have to get pretty close to it so that the people, particularly in the back, I think, can hear what you have to say. I'll recognize the people at the mic. You may have to stand in line. When you get there, we'd ask that you just state your name, where you live, and your position on the motion that's before the body, and for or against, and as I just said, and the reasons for it. That will help us move along, and if you just agree with something someone else has said, you can just say that if you want, or you can wait to vote on that component of the motion. There's no sense in 10 people coming up and saying the same thing if we want to move along as efficiently as we can. If you have a question, and, you know, if you can, get to the mic and stand in line and just ask your question. That will help because then everyone will hear the question. If you have trouble getting to the mic or you're a long ways away, if you raise your hand or raise your blue card, and you should all have blue cards if you're going to vote here today. You had to go through the registration process. You're going to vote by holding those up. And at the end of the meeting, do you want them back?
Yes.
Okay. Blue cards go back. It's a frugal financial measure. Turn your cards in when you leave. But if you have a question and you can't get to the mic easily, if you raise your card, I will try to see you and ask you what your question is. You'll have to say it loud enough for me to hear it so that I can repeat it. And that way, hopefully, the information flow will be available to everyone. You ask the question, the town officials and budget committee members will answer them. In relation to motions, I'm going to ask, because there's no disagreement between the Budget Committee and the Selectmen this year, I'll ask Jeff Wakeman, the Selectman, to make the motion, and we'll have a second from one member of the board, another member of the Board of Selectmen. That will just get things moving and keep them moving. The motions, just to think about a little, is you can't come up to the mic and state a position and then call the question. Calling the question means you're asking for a vote. You want to go to vote on what's in front of us. If you want to call a question, you just go to the mic and say, "Mr. Moderator, I call a question." That gets a second. Somebody has to second it. And then we vote on whether you want to call a question, which means if that passes, then the question has been called, and the main motion will be before you. I'll tell you what it is, and we'll vote on it. You can't just call a question and go right from there to ending the discussion. We don't take negative motions. If you don't think an item is properly funded, you can move to $0 for a particular item. It's also good to avoid a lot of amendments because that gets very confusing. If you don't like what's before the body, you can come to the mic and say, "I'm going to vote against this. I'd like to see X dollars appropriated for this instead of the amount that's been put forward." We vote that up or down. If it doesn't pass, I take another motion, and another amount can be put forward. I will do my best to call a vote from up here visually and look to my helpers here to make sure. If it's really clear, if it's close, and we can't call it from up here, then I will ask people to stand who are on one side or the other, and we'll have to do a standing count so that we can tell how to call the vote. There is at least one article here today that will require a written ballot. For that, we'll put the ballot box up here. You can circle them both ways. You'll get a square that says, you've got your written ballots here? Okay. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. I'll try to count you. You can yell if I miss you. When we vote on the written ballot, do not put an X through either yes or no. Circle yes or put a check mark by it, or if it's no, circle no and put a check by it. Because if you put a cross, we can't tell what your intent is. If you cross out yes, did you mean to vote no, blah, blah, blah. So those are the basic ground rules. The conversations, if you're going to have them, please just go out into the hall. And in relation to that, we do have the Girl Scouts out there selling cookies. We've got the raffle going for the quilt. And as I said before, you can't bring food or drinks in here. Now, that is about all I have to say, and the rest of this meeting is going to belong to you. So that being said, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 4. Oh, excuse me. I forgot the most important thing, the election results. Somebody was about to say something. And what?
Two.
Oh, you have two awards? Oh, that I didn't know about. All right. We'll announce the election results, and then I guess we have a couple of awards to make, or announce, anyway. For the position of Selectman, you have elected Jeffrey Wakeman with 500 votes and Mark Blake with 388 votes. Wade Kaplinger got 217 votes, and Max Harvey Garcia got 121 votes. For Budget Committee, you have elected Kevin Neto with 671 votes. Mac Farren received 62 votes as a write-in and is elected, and Rick Emmons received 57 votes as a write-in and is elected. For the RSU Board of Directors, you have elected Michelle Richardson with a vote of 650 votes. On the referendum question, the referendum was defeated by a vote of 595 no, 259 yes. Total ballots cast was 870. All right. Who wants to do the scholarship awards announcements?
I'm Kendra O'Connell from Royalsboro Road, and I would like to call down Bailey Carnes, please. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the Durham Scholarship Committee, I'm pleased to present this award to Bailey Carnes. It is the 2016 Town of Durham Scholarship in the amount of $1,000. Congratulations and best wishes for a rewarding school year.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
The other award that we have to present today is the Spirit of America Award. It is an award that the Town of Durham presents annually to a person or a group that does much in a community with volunteerism. And this year, we are presenting the award to the First Congregational Church of Durham in general, and specifically to Julie Wagner and Betty Cattell for their work with the Home Heating Fund. At least 14 years ago, Betty Cattell founded Warm Winter Walks, where the church would do a walkathon and raise money. And they donated 50% of the proceeds to the Home Heating Fund here in the town. Last year, they donated 100% of the funds. And also, in August of last year, the church council came up with an idea of getting the community together and offering community lunches on Tuesdays for a $2 to $4 donation. And so, we'd like to present these awards to Julie Wagner, and we'll present Mrs. Cattell's to her husband Charlie as she passed away this last year.
I just would like to thank the Selectmen for this award. The community lunch is a result of the volunteers, of the members of our church, the First Congregational Church. Every lunch, we have a wonderful time. And also, the volunteer effort of people right here in town who are not members of the church. And that's how we keep things going at our church, by reaching out into the community and building a community that's both within the church family and outside of the church family. If you've come to the community lunch, I'm sure you've had a great time. I invite all of you to come to the lunch. It's a great bargain. We have a book club on the first Tuesday of the month. I also wanted to just announce that our church is in the process of a major fundraising campaign because we need to replace the shingles on our roof. It's a big project for a small church. And so, one of our members has donated a beautiful quilt. We do have raffle tickets for that outside in the lobby. And so, I invite you to support our church so we can continue to hold efforts like this to support our community, like the Warm Winter Walk and the Community Lunch. And I hope we see you all at the Community Lunch this coming Tuesday. Thank you.
All right. Here we go. I'm going to ask for a motion on Article 4 to see if the town will vote to adopt the Main Moderator's Manual Rule of Procedure Sixth Edition as the rules of order for this meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Somewhat.
And the second. Did you get those, Shannon? You're all set, right? Okay. We're all set on a motion and second on Article 4. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion before you. All those in favor, raise your cards. All those opposed, motion carries. I am now going to ask Jeff Wakeman to just give a brief overview of the municipal tax impact of the budget that's being presented to you before we get into those articles that would have a tax impact. Jeff?
All right. Because there are so many moving parts when it comes to figuring out what the final mill rate's going to be and so on, it's really hard to project. But if everything stayed the same last year, other than the budget that we're going to pass today, the budget that we pass today will raise the mill rate about 1.03 or 5.9%. Of this, 53%, sorry, 0.53 or about 3% is due to the increase in the budget. And the other 0.5 or 2.9% is due to a clerical error, which we will be discussing in an upcoming article. Also, we have the county appropriation change, and that's going to affect the mill rate by about 0.05 or about 0.3%. This does not take into consideration any effects from either the RSU 5 budget or the fact that the homestead exemption this year is going from $10,000 to $15,000. And that homestead exemption actually could end up increasing the mill rate a bit because the state only covers half of that. So, it looks good, but the money still has to be raised, so it just gets raised on the rest of the valuation. So it kind of pushes the mill rate up just a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. I'm now going to ask, as a procedural matter for a motion, to allow the following non-residents to speak: Ruth Glazier, the Durham Administrative Assistant; Calvin Wilmeyer, Road Commissioner; Paul Baines, Code Enforcement Officer; Sheriff Sampson; and Elizabeth Hafrey of Community Concepts. May I have a motion to allow them to speak to the meeting?
Somewhat.
It's been moved and seconded that these individuals be allowed to speak to us today as non-residents of Durham. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. We are now going to go to Article 5, which is the article that says, "To see if the town will vote that all warrant articles over $40,000 be voted on by written ballot. This shall not include items such as contracts and bonds into which the town has previously entered into in good faith." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 5 as written. Discussion on the article. Yes, sir. Chuck. I can still see almost to the bleachers.
Chuck Pollak, Newbrook Road.
Get close to them.
Chuck Pollak, Newbrook Road. Is this the article that Donna Church is, and if it is, can we get a little bit more information on it?
So, this article is a result of the Alternative Warrant Committee's action this year. It is not the article that's going to, that could affect future town meetings. It is for this town meeting only, and they were, the request was to put this on here to require a written ballot for every article over $40,000. And it was at the request of the committee.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Richardson, Patriot Way.
Get a little closer to the mic and speak slowly, okay? Everybody wants to hear what you have to say. It's all yours.
Probably don't. My question is, is there an estimate on how much time this adds to the meeting? It's about 15 minutes per vote?
About 10 to 15 minutes per vote.
And how many warrants would this cover?
I think it might be like six or seven, four or five. Yeah. So you're talking probably between one to two hours that it could add to the meeting.
Okay. And is the thought behind it that perhaps folks are voting differently than how they feel because of other people seeing how they vote?
That is what was presented to us. Yes.
I guess if you're interested in people's opinion on the articles, I'm not in favor of this article. Thanks.
Thank you. Yes, Lee?
Kevin Neto, Quaker Meeting House Road. Let me say, I'm speaking for myself here. The Budget Committee did not discuss this issue, so this is just my opinion. I don't think this article is necessary. My count is actually 13 articles on the warrant this year, at about, you know, so you're talking closer to four hours of extended meeting time. I don't think it's necessary to put the town in a box and require a written ballot for everything over $40,000. There is always the option, there is now, and there always has been, for someone to get up and make a motion that a particular article will be considered on a written ballot. So if there's something that people feel is going to be particularly contentious, and they're concerned about people's, they don't want their vote to be seen, then we can always move for a written ballot on that question. But to box us into a corner to require it for everything over $40,000, I think is not a good use of our time.
Alice?
Alice McPeak, Rabbit Road. It's very difficult, obviously not for me, but for other people, to get up and give their opinions. They are intimidated. It is difficult. We have proven, I guess it was proven last year, that a written ballot can actually change the outcome of a vote. And I do think it gives people the freedom not to be looked at askance by other people whose views disagree with them. It used to be, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, that any person could recommend a secret ballot.
Yeah. The procedural process for calling a secret or written ballot is for the motion to be made and seconded. Then we vote on whether we're going to run a written ballot. That has to pass by a majority of those here voting.
Okay. Back before the new moderators' rules or whatever, which are not new anymore, which are like 25 years old or something like this, if I remember correctly, the case was, I could say, "I want a written ballot on that," and there did not have to be a majority vote. And when the moderators' rules were amended, it took a majority vote in order to get a secret ballot.
Yeah. My recollection of history is a little different, and it goes back as long as yours, which is a lot closer to 40 than 25.
We won't even go there.
But the rule that I've just enunciated was always the rule that should have been followed. When I took over, we stopped, and that was 34 years ago.
Okay.
We stopped doing it that way because even though the moderators' rules didn't call for that type of one person calling, the town, I do think, had honored that or followed that
Yes.
before I was the moderator.
Okay.
So I'm the problem.
You're never a problem, Gary. You're just a welcome addition to these meetings. Anyway- Anyway, I just want to make sure that people feel the freedom to vote their consciences. Obviously, if you need a majority vote in order to get a secret ballot, then in the majority of cases, people are not free to vote their consciences.
Yes, sir.
Neil Berry, Stackpole Road.
Get a little closer.
Neil Berry, Stackpole Road. I don't understand how you call for a written ballot. Would you restate that?
Yes. If you come up to the mic as during part of the discussion, or if, if, if you don't want to come up to the mic, but you raise your card and I recognize you, then you say, "Mr. Moderator, I move that we vote by written ballot on this article and the motion before us." Somebody seconds that motion to call for a written ballot. We then vote on that motion. Are we going to use that method of voting or not? If it passes, then we do use the written ballot. People line up and they come up here and vote with the yes or no ballots. If it fails, then we don't use that process. I'll call for the vote. People will raise their cards. We will do our best to count them. And if it's, if we can call the vote comfortably, we call the vote. If we can't, I can always call for a written ballot. And I do do that on occasion because the number is so close. Even when the counters come back, it's too close for me to call, even though it might go one way or the other.
So that can all happen after the article's been moved and seconded?
My, my, my calling of the written, yeah, if somebody.
After the article's been moved and seconded, I can come up and ask for a written ballot?
Any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to call on, for a vote on the motion before you, which is to see if the town will vote that all warrant articles over $40,000 be voted on by written ballot. This shall not include items such as contracts and bonds into which the town has previously entered into in good faith. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. All those opposed? Motion fails. As a procedural matter and to hopefully get folks out of here a little earlier, Kevin, and I apologize for calling him Wayne about two minutes ago, and I've only known you about 35 years. Kevin asked, and I agree, that if it is the pleasure of the town, we should now go to Articles 36 to 39, which are also related to the concept of using another form of voting on certain expenditures. Those would require you to go to a referendum ballot if the selectmen accept and follow what would be an advisory vote to them, so that those articles that are described there and the amounts that are triggered, you would go to the polls just like you do for the elected officials' positions. Selectmen, the referendum question on the school that we announced earlier, you would actually vote on those items at a referendum election, which is also known as a secret ballot election. You would get a ballot that would say yes or no, and the articles that, some of which are on our town meeting today, would show up on that referendum ballot. So I'm going to ask Kevin to make the motion to take that, those items up out of order because I think the discussion is going to be essentially the same. And we'll take a second, we'll have a discussion on it, and then we'll vote on those items. For his motion to take something up out of order, it has to pass by two-thirds of those here in voting on that motion. Kevin?
Mr. Moderator, I move we consider Articles 36 through 39 out of order based upon the reasons you just articulated.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we take Articles 36 to 39 up out of order. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. We put them down. All those opposed? The motion carries. We are now at Article 36. Article 36. To see if the town will vote to recommend holding a secret ballot referendum election in accordance with Title 30A and Title 21A to be held after town meeting in 2017 to approve all warrant articles in excess of $50,000. This referendum shall not include items such as contracts and bonds into which the town has previously entered into in good faith, nor shall it include any initial votes to approve bonds. Note under Article 36, this is an advisory vote and is not binding on the selectmen per Title 30A, Section 2501 without a charter. The method of voting and the conduct of a municipal election are governed by Title 21A. That's the motion before you, and was it moved and seconded? Who's going to move it? Alice has made a motion. Is there a second? Donna? It's been moved by Alice, seconded by Donna, that the town pass Article 36. Donna, did you want to speak?
These, these articles.
Get really close. Get really close to the mic. And tell us who you are.
Donna Church. Okay.
Closer.
Closer? Holy shoot. All right. These articles, this started out to be something I thought was simple. And what the whole thing was, what the whole thing was designed for was to get more participation, get everybody a chance to vote that couldn't come to town meeting. There's an awful lot of spouses that couldn't show up because of babysitters. Today, there's some really good people that worked really hard on some of these articles. They couldn't show up for emergencies. So all of this started out to just make it so everybody had a fair chance to vote. A lot of construction people work half a day on Saturday. I had issues with a store once that I couldn't come in at all in the morning. But I think for the amount of money that the town spends, everybody should have a fair say in the money. We put a committee together. We looked at different towns, how some of them do it, because some of them do do that and vote on all the articles. Some of them are very overwhelming, so the committee picked and chose the good points and the bad points and tried to put a real good, comprehensive plan together, which got more and more and more involved, whether we liked it or not. There was so many rules and regulations. But anyway, to meet all the criterias and stuff we had to meet, we had to come up with absentee ballots, the secret ballots and everything. So that's kind of where all of these stem from, was trying to give everybody an equal chance to just vote on all the, on the articles. And of course, the bonds are a given. You can't really vote on those. They're already in there. So any amount of money on and above we're going to spend, it just gives everybody else that can't make the meeting a fair chance. Plus, it gives everybody a chance to, I want all the articles discussed, so at least everybody has a chance to know what's going on before we even vote on them. So that's kind of a general idea on what happened here.
Thank you, Donna. Anyone else care to speak on Article 36? Yes, ma'am.
Heather Roy, I live on Hollowell Road. I'd like to know if we have an estimate of what this would cost to be able to, to hold a ballot this way.
All right. Can the clerk's office answer what a referendum election costs generally?
It's, it's not really a referendum. It really is the same day.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, it's a written ballot.
It's a written ballot, but it's the same day that you vote on the municipal officers.
Right. Yes. Yeah. By terms of our office, a secret ballot election using a printed ballot.
So if, if it only went to one vote, it would, it would not cost us any more to do it. If there were items that were voted down and had to come back for another vote, I believe we figured it's about $1,000 per, per vote. So if we had to bring it back for another vote, it'd be another $1,000 or something like that.
I am on the committee. What we found was that, and we have a good turnout today for town meeting. Last year, I think there were 130 or 132 or something like this. And we have, I believe it's over 3,000 people that are entitled to vote in the town of Durham. So basically, 130 people are deciding the bills for everybody else in this community. I mean, when you think about it, and I can't remember what the actual percentage was, but it's like, you know, less than 1% of the people, and only those that come to town meeting are deciding everybody else's taxes, which seemed to us just wrong. Granted, if they cared enough, they'd be here. But there are some people who care enough and have given up. There are some people who care enough and can't be here. So this was an alternative. You asked how much additional time it would take if we voted today on secret ballot for all of the items over $40,000 that were non-contractual. This would take no additional time except the time in the voting booth. So there is no additional time at town meeting. You still have the, the discussion on the articles so that everyone can be informed. There should be, the way that the committee worked it out, no additional expense to the town of Durham, except for possible printing costs. But if it all, if it is all done on one ballot, so there's no additional expense. So all this is trying to do is to give more people the opportunity to vote.
Thank you, Alice. Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Richardson.
Get closer. Get closer.
Really? I feel like I'm on top of this thing.
Raise that. You're all tall here today.
I know.
Or tip it up. Yeah. There we go.
I'm torn on this because I certainly agree with the premise of trying to increase our participation in, in the approval of the town budget. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea to figure out how we do that. But my concern is more, I'm not sure where I heard the phrase, but something to the effect of the rule of unintended consequences, if we start having a vote on, how many articles are there we would be voting on?
How many? What was the answer, Kevin? The question was how many articles, for example, in this year's warrant might be.
Would go to that written ballot.
Kevin will.
The way I counted it is based upon what's on this year's warrant. If we were under those rules, there'd be 13 articles that would be subject to that.
And we don't vote on the full budget. We vote article by article. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what happens when one or two or three of those articles fails? What, like, what's the procedure? Do the other ones go into effect, but we have to keep working on those? And I'm going to guess Alice knows.
Alice?
The way it was presented, the way the committee decided and what was presented to the Board of Selectmen was that it would be basically, because of state rulings, you basically have an either-or option, a yes or no option. The yes option would be whatever the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee recommended. The no option would be last year's budget. Questions on that? So if, if the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee had one item and everybody voted for that, that would, or the majority voted for that, that would go through. If that failed, then no would mean we would go with last year's budget.
Thank you, Alice. Kevin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, that, that is not the way the articles appear on the warrant right now. The way they, if this passes, you'll notice there's two or three warrant articles that come after that, and they essentially say that until an article is passed, the town can spend a maximum of a three-year average of the previous years. So because most articles go up, you know, somewhat, a couple percent at least most years, you wouldn't even be able to spend what you had spent the previous year. It would be an average of the previous three years. So there are subsequent articles that, that kind of detail that. And I would also wonder, under that scenario, what if the Budget Committee and the Selectmen differ on their recommendation? Do you then have three options? So I'm not sure how that works.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and, you know, generally, most of our articles go up a reasonable amount because you guys do a great job in making sure that, I mean, if there was a year where we had an unusual expense that we weren't, that's not recurring, and, you know, next year we're voting and we say, "Yes, this is the new number," which in theory could be less than the prior year, right? So if last year we had a big purchase of something, and this year we don't have that purchase, but I still think this year's is too high. If I vote no, I'm voting for last year's big number? Like, I, I feel like if we're voting no, then that article has to go back for discussion, reevaluation. And then how do you guys know if people voted no because it was too high or voted no because it was too low? Because, you know, it's, it's in the voting booth, so, you know, we can't have the discussion like you could here. I don't, I don't know. I guess I understand the, I understand the goal of more participation, and I certainly am in favor of coming up with a way of, of trying to do that. But I'm not convinced that this is the way. And my other question on, we talked about the cost of having the vote, which ideally would be no incremental cost because it's the same as the municipals. If there are additional votes, that would cost money. But we would have to have a charter, right? So has there, these don't, these aren't binding, and you can't do them until we, if we, unless we had a charter. Is that correct?
No. They're not binding on the selectmen, but the selectmen can choose, can choose this option.
So what does it say about the charter? Didn't bring it up.
It, it has to be voted on every year, and it's still not binding on the, on the selectmen. So the selectmen could still choose to do a different way, but the selectmen have the option to do this way. So if you vote for it, it wouldn't be wise of the selectmen to do a different way next year. But it's not binding, by state law, it's not binding on us. And we wanted to make sure that was clear, that by state law.
So if we had a charter, it would be binding? Is that what the, what's the reference to the charter in the question for, or in the note?
If we had a charter, we could write these things into the charter.
Oh, okay.
And then it would become binding.
So we don't have to have a charter to do this?
No. No, we don't have to have the charter.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Right up close to that mic, and you can tip the mic down a little. I think people should adjust that mic and get really close.
I'm the shortest one to speak so far. Ann Torogrosa, Snow Road. My concern is, well, let me ask for a point of clarification. So the referendum would be before the town meeting. Is that correct? The referendum vote?
So the, the kind of plan that we have right now is, the referendum vote, we have to have open for 30 days for absentee ballot, and the actual vote day, we'd probably still keep like the first Friday in April. We'd have the town meeting in middle of March, like the third, somewhere around the third Saturday of March. And so it would have, this town meeting would fall in the middle of the voting process. And we would also have a public information session during the town meeting to discuss the articles that would be on the ballot.
So here's my concern. I think that makes sense in that everyone who's at town meeting, so for example, the fire chief this year is asking for a new fire truck, and I want to hear him talk about that and tell me what the pros and cons are. The folks who need the secret ballot are the folks who are not going to be able to make it to the town meeting anyway. So I'm not sure we're solving that problem. The folks who are at town meeting are those who are going to be the most educated, the most informed, able to listen to the pros and cons and everybody speak in favor or against. The folks who need, who I'm hearing need the secret ballot aren't those who are going to be sitting in the town meeting. The other thing, as Michelle identified, town meeting gives us a flexible approach where if we don't want to spend $200,000, but we want to spend $150,000, we can do that here without going back to the polls again and again. It's a much more flexible process and efficient process, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
The reason why this kind of got so complicated is because we didn't want to do a charter and get into a charter. So we were trying to get around all that. One of the things that they said is, how are we going to choose when you've got a budget or a selectman? And on one of the meetings, it had been brought up and agreed that we could do alternating, first a selectman, then a budget number, then alternating in a budget number. And then it was agreed that we would go with a three-year average. So you'd have either the selectman number or the budget number, and then you'd have your three-year average, and that's what you'd vote on to get through that. The other part of it is, yeah, we do figure that most of us can be here, but God forbid if there was a fire, half this place would be gone, and they wouldn't get a chance to vote on everything. So that was one of the things. And like I said, there is, I, in my area, I hear a lot of people stating afterwards, gee, how'd it go? I really wanted to be there, but I couldn't make it. And, and they are interested, people that have participated. Jill Castingway is, is wonderful. She was on the committee. She did a lot of work. She had medical emergencies today. She could. She couldn't be here, and I know of a few others that really were interested in everything, and they just can't participate. Let's see, what was the other thing? So I think, I think I covered it, but the biggest thing was this got very complicated because of charters and trying to get away from a charter and try to get everybody to have a fair chance at it.
Thank you, Donna. Kevin?
If I understood what Donna said correctly, and let me say, I share the sentiment of getting more people involved, and I really appreciate the work that Donna and the committee did on this, and appreciate the motivation behind it. But if I heard it correctly, I'm troubled by the notion that there would be some sort of agreement to alternate year to year, the Budget Committee's and the Selectmen's recommendation on a particular article. I mean, the whole purpose, this year's not a great example because we happen to agree on just about everything, but on those times when there is a disagreement, to say, well, this year it's the Selectmen's turn, and that's the one we're gonna put before the people. If, I might be hearing this wrong, maybe Donna can come back up and explain that, but the whole purpose of Budget Committee, Selectmen Committee is to, in some cases, present two options and the arguments attached to them, and then let the community decide. So I might be understanding that wrong, so. She's saying I am, so.
Maybe I didn't present it right, obviously. Anyway, it wasn't for like this year Budget Committee and this year Selectmen. No, it was every other article, you know, like you go through and you just, because we had, hm?
So every article wouldn't have both the Selectmen and the Budget Committee's recommendation?
No.
See, that's my problem.
It would either have, we would switch back and forth to do it evenly on, and I think Jane might have more information on that. The other thing was, on the town, to have the town meeting, the voting after town meeting. This way here, we used to do it that way, and it gave us a chance to meet the people that were trying to run for Selectmen or Budget Committee or anything. They used to get up and introduce themselves and say who they were. So that was another reason for changing the voting and everything after town meeting, so.
Thank you, Donna. Yes, ma'am. Can you tip that right down and get very close? You almost have to bite it.
Jane Rice, Bowie Hill. I guess my thought on if it went to a referendum or a vote after the fact, people, I think they're being, saying that people would be uninformed, the people that did not come to the meeting. I mean, we're having this videotaped. Why couldn't it be on the public channel so that people could educate themselves prior to going and doing the written ballot?
Thank you. Is there somebody that can answer that question? Are we videotaping?
It could be on the town channel within a couple days after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Paula Erdman Purdy from Hollowell Road. This sounds like this is gonna start to change our way of government, and I have to say, being part of Durham and the town meeting, and that's the whole process of a small town and a community. And I really feel that it's a civic duty of everyone to be here. Yep, there's a few people who can't make it, but there's almost four thousand people in town who aren't here, and there are many people I know that say, well, I don't really care. Doesn't matter to me. So I, my concern is the change of government, and I like the town meeting concept, and I, you know, I think that's why a lot of people are here. So just to throw that out there.
Thank you. Eric?
Eric Bowie, Stackpole Road. I think we all know that we like to keep town meeting the way it was. It's very romantic. It's very unusual.
I don't think I've ever heard it called romantic, Eric.
Oh, if you, you know, work with people who live in the city of Portland or Lewis Nowitzki, it's so great to still have town, isn't that a great time of year? It's just so wonderful, and it is, and we're very lucky, and we're very privileged. We've had a lot of people who have worked very hard over the years to make this town continue to operate under that form of government. But I think fifty years ago, when the town budget was probably a hundred thousand dollars, it was much easier to have a civil conversation about where we should spend our money, because it was such a lesser impact on the overall spending of every household. And Jeff or Kevin or Mill, what is, just roughly, what's the budget for the town? Four million?
Almost two point seven.
That's the municipal budget?
That's the municipal.
Okay. And granted, we don't have as much say over the school budget. But the idea that a hundred people or a hundred and thirty people have the say of how to spend over two million dollars just isn't maybe the way to proceed. And I do think that if anyone has interest in what the article stands for, they can talk to their neighbors, they can talk to their friends, they can be informed, and then they can go vote their conscience without feeling that, and the reason that people don't come to town meeting, it's become so contentious in so many ways that, yeah, why go and ruin a Saturday morning listening to people fight over this and then stand up and feel like you're gonna vote and then be judged on how you vote? And granted, we can do a secret ballot, but it isn't reliable, having a ballot to vote on these articles and take it upon yourself to be informed on how to vote is, in my opinion, the way that we should be looking at how to run this town. It's growing. It's getting bigger. We can still have town meeting. We just need to maybe reconsider how we end up where we end up. So, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Mike Ferris Service, Pinkham Brook Road. Easy way, right? By show of hands, can everyone who's not on the internet, raise your hand, please? Who's not on the internet? Okay. We're in the information age, right? The place where we moved from, been out here a couple years almost, and very, community's been very welcoming to our family, and I'm appreciative of that. But where we moved from, furnished voter guides, probably about three-quarters of an inch thick, and made with recycled paper, very lightweight, very budget-conscious, if you will. But it would seem to me that a voter guide on these issues, that we would have time to review and process and think through, I got this yesterday, and I only had a chance to review it while I was waiting in line here this morning. Seemed like if we had more time to think about these issues and have a pro and con discussion in the voter guide, that we'd be able to make more informed decisions instead of, you know, in thirty seconds, all in favor. You see what I'm saying? And so, and those who weren't online, they could request a written copy from the town office or pick it up at the town office. That way, we're actually making informed decisions when we do come here to vote.
Thank you. Chuck?
Chuck Pollack, Millbrook. For me, the gentleman sat there and said that only a hundred and thirty people are voting today. There's over four thousand people in this town. They're saying that they're concerned that because of emergency reasons, they're not here. If you took ten percent of that and said, ten percent of the four thousand that aren't gonna be here, that's still thirty-six hundred people that should be here to vote. It is your duty. It is your right. It is your choice whether you are here or not. The rest of the people in the town are choosing not to be here. No matter how we change this or how we move it around, they still, more than likely, you'll get some increase, but for the majority of them, they're still not gonna be concerned enough to come and take the time to vote. Personally, I like the banter back and forth here. I think it is good. I think it educates all of us to a better, to do a better vote. Yeah, some people are gonna make a snap decision on their vote. The information is out there. Today is not, was not your first day, chance to get this book. I mean, they are out there prior to that. Just more people just need to be concerned and get to vote, and I guess, so I want it to stay the way it is, and hopefully everybody else will do that, really.
Okay, Chuck. We're not supposed to applaud, so just, you know. Yes, ma'am.
Roland Reed, Hollowell Road.
Can you tip that mic up and get a little closer? There you go. Or you can pick the whole thing up, I guess. If you, yeah, if you pick it up too much, then the shorter people can't. There you go.
Last night's vote.
Put it right up.
Was that a secret ballot? Were secret ballots valid out yesterday for the vote?
Yes.
Okay. I just recently moved here about a year and a half ago from One of Robbins, Georgia. We have a hundred and sixty-five thousand people that lives in the town. We do not have this many people that shows up for the town meeting. See, yesterday's vote, beside the RSU five, I also selected my, what they call Selectmen. Am I correct? So I made my choice yesterday, who's going to run my town and do my choices. If I don't like who I put in there, then I won't vote for him next time. It's just like our congressmen and our senators and our president. They don't ask us every time they're going to do something. So basically what I'm saying, Durham's got something really going on here. This town meeting, these people, this get-together, I don't think we need to tie the hands of the people we selected to represent us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
I have a procedural question for the board. If we adopted this and, say, a handful of articles failed, what is the timing and requirements with regard to, is another public hearing required and period of notice? Do you need another thirty days for absentee ballots? I mean, can you tell us a little bit about procedures if not every article passes on the first ballot?
If we were to put it out and not just take the, the average of the previous three years, we would need at least thirty days, because we'd have to have another thirty-day written ballot. There's no requirement of public hearing or anything of that, like that, but, I'm sorry. There's no, there's no requirement of a public hearing, but there is a thirty-day requirement for absentee ballots. Balloting, yeah.
I just wanted to say to Chuck, we do not lose the banter. We do not lose the feeling of, you know, the town meeting, because all of the banter would happen at town meeting. The vote would be afterwards. Here are the obstacles that the committee faced. In order to have an absentee ballot, you need thirty days, okay? The other problem was, the town meeting was the first Saturday in April, today. Technically, the Selectmen were supposed to take office before the beginning of April. That was another technicality. We were only, had the option of basically a yes or no vote if we didn't want what you're concerned about, which is the multiple elections, and which is what we were concerned about because we wanted this to be a minimal cost to the town of Durham, if any. The question was, could we have the voting for the municipal officers after town meeting? The answer was, yes, we could. We used to. Town officials used to be, you had to adjourn the town meeting by 3:00 PM so that the polls could open, so that we could vote for the officers. So there's, that was just a procedural question. So we could do the election for the municipal officers, and we could have those items. Let's face it, where do we get the controversy? We get the controversy if we're gonna get a new fire truck. We get the controversy, now we're gonna have it if, you know, if we get a new public works truck. The things that people wanted, this secret ballot that we voted down for so that they could actually vote what they wanted. So that's why we picked the amount. We didn't wanna worry about the, you know, the cemetery fund for a couple thousand dollars. We didn't wanna have to worry about giving five hundred dollars to this charitable organization. We figured, yeah, it's all right if less than one percent control those items, they're small. Basically, anything over, and we chose the amount of forty thousand dollars. So figure the problems we had. You have to have an absentee ballot. You have to have thirty days before the absentee ballot. And I agree with the gentleman, these things don't come out until roughly, what, a week before, ten days if we're lucky, and then we can go to the town office or Durham, get and go and pick up our copy of the warrant. We wanted, so you've still got the discussion. I assume the people of Durham are intelligent enough that if we have one year before out of the three that is a spiked item where we spent an additional hundred thousand dollars that we wouldn't have normally, that when they see the higher amount there and the Selectmen and Budget Committee's recommendation there, that they would vote for the lower amount, which would be the Selectmen and the Budget Committees. This year, on this article, is there any article where the Selectmen and the Budget Committee did not agree?
No, they didn't just do it.
There is not one. There is not one. There is normally one or two, and the difference is, going through old warrants, is normally it's something like five hundred dollars, because they think, you know, the Selectmen think this ought to go, or the Budget Committee wants to give an extra computer there. There is, if you can find me one that goes over a thousand dollars difference between the Committee, Budget Committee and the Selectmen, it's rare. I don't remember any. I didn't find any. So, you know, to say that we're taking away the rights of either the Selectmen or Budget Committee, isn't the case. Not one article was at its agreement, which is wonderful. It means that you both worked hard, you both came up with a common number.
Thank you, Alice. Yes, sir.
Now I forget what I was gonna say. This is a typical town meeting here where there's a special item up that, okay, now we're gonna get our special interest people come in and crowd the town meeting, not that this is a big crowd. Just like the vote yesterday, we had more than the normal town meeting votes because of the RSU vote. If people are interested enough in the town to say what they want to happen in the town, they'll show up to these meetings and vote. That's your duty, like Chuck said, it's everybody's duty to come to these meetings, find out what you wanna do, say your piece, if you wanna say your piece, and vote how you wanna vote. I don't think anybody's ever been chided because they voted one way or the other by a hands vote here at this town meeting. I just said, I don't think, but. I personally would like to see that this warrant article gets voted down.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to call a question.
Is there a second? All right, Fred, did you see Fred? Called a question, seconded. The question has been called, which means we're gonna vote on whether you wanna vote on the motion to pass Article 36. So calling the question is, let's see, two-thirds. So we're gonna need two-thirds of those voting yes on this question, which is whether we're ready to vote on the other one. So all those in favor of calling the question, raise your cards and hold them up. Thank you. All those opposed, passes overwhelmingly. We are now at Article 36 and the motion before you. Article 36. The motion seeks to pass the article which says, "To see if the town will vote to recommend holding a secret ballot referendum election in accordance with Titles 30A and Titles 21A, to be held after town meeting in 2017 to approve all warrant articles in excess of fifty thousand dollars. This referendum shall not include items such as contracts and bonds into which the town has previously entered into in good faith, nor shall it include any initial votes to approve bonds." The note says that this is an advisory vote and is not binding on the Selectmen. Per Titles 38, Section 2501, without a charter, the method of voting and the conduct of a municipal election are governed by Titles 21A. All those in favor of the motion to pass Article 36 as written, raise your cards and hold them up. Thank you. All those opposed, the motion fails. Article 37. To see if the town will vote to move town meeting to the third Saturday in March 200...
Can I move to pass by all three of those?
No, no, we're gonna vote them.
Do we have to vote?
We have to move for passage in a second. If you don't wanna pass it, vote no.
Okay.
But we're gonna... But we're going to do it, they're all on the warrant articles, all on the warrant, so we're going to take them up one at a time and vote on them. I understand it's a housekeeping sort of measure. Do you have a question, ma'am? Right, their passage depends on it, but because they're on the warrant before you, we have to take an up and down vote on those articles. It'll be procedural and I think it will be quite quick. Article 37, "To see if the town will vote to move town meeting to the third Saturday in March 2017 to accommodate the referendum vote." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved by Jeff and seconded by Sarah that we pass Article 37. Is there any discussion or comment on this? If you voted no on the prior article, you will vote no on the motion before you. Everybody clear? All right. All those in favor of Article 37 and the motion before you, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion fails. Article 38, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed an average of the past three accepted annual budget amounts for those budgets to be voted on by referendum, except, accepting public works until a budget is passed." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 38 as written. Your vote should be consistent with your prior votes. Any questions? All those in favor of passing Article 38 as written, raise your cards. All those opposed, the motion fails. Article 39, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to spend an amount not to exceed an average of the past two accepted annual public works budget amounts until a budget is passed." May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded, we pass Article 39 as written. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion fails. All right, thank you, and thank you for the cordiality of that discussion. It's an important one, and I think people on both sides did a very nice job of presenting their case and arguing for or against it. Yes, sir, do you have something?
I would take out Article 33 out of order.
Article 33. Let me find it. Article 33. All right, yes. You can make that motion if there's a second, we'll go through whether we want to take it out of order. All right, there's been a motion made and seconded to take Article 33 out of order. This will require two-thirds of those present and voting in order to pass. Comments and discussion, yes, sir.
So, I'm not, it's not clear to me why this isn't upfront, more in the warrant anyway, because if this passes or fails, then it affects what we are allowed to levy for taxes. So, we'll be going through a whole bunch of articles that could get reduced if the tax levy limit is maintained. And by, by the way, this is-
Can you say that again and get closer? Because I, I heard you, but I think it was really, it wasn't coming out over the speakers.
So, this is regarding a law passed and signed by Governor Baldacci in 2005, which is a tax levy limit on the municipalities. It was designed to limit the amount of growth in what the municipalities could tax the citizens. And it's a formula which is the average of the state income increase or decrease and the property value increase for the previous year. And there is a worksheet that Ruth has filled out and come up with this number in that article, which is $897,000, which is significantly less than what the town intends to levy. I think it's 1.3 million that the town intends to levy, or something like that. So, there's a huge difference between what the folks who passed this law thought was right and what the town is actually going to levy. So, if we, if we enforce this levy, my understanding is the town cannot spend that money, over and above that. So, again, to me, this article should be right up front. Now, maybe, I don't think I'm misquoting anything, perhaps somebody could clarify that, but I think I'm right.
Okay, thank you. We're going to, any other comments or discussion on the motion before you, which is to take this item up out of order? It's just, we're going to deal with this right now, that's what we're talking about, not the merits of the argument one way or the other, but I wanted to give the gentleman a chance just to explain why he wants to take it up out of order. Any other questions about, or discussion about taking this up out of order? Kevin?
Procedural question is, when we get, is it at the tail end of the warrant because decisions we make on spending articles somehow inform a particular number that we, that we have to raise the limit to? I don't know if there's somebody from the selectmen or administrator. Is this article dependent upon things we do in earlier articles?
There's no number in this article that's dependent upon it. This are, so, this article would have the same effect, you know, whether it's voted on now or whether it's voted on later, it, it would have the same effect.
Okay, are you ready, do you want to vote and have a discussion on this right now? That's what's in front of you, just the method and timing of the vote, not the method, the timing of the vote. So, any further discussion on whether we're going to take this up out of order? We've already started, so we may as well keep on going, but that's just a non-voter's opinion. So, any, any further discussion? All those in favor of taking this up out of order, raise your cards. All those opposed? All right, we're going to have to count whether we're going to take this up out of order. All those in favor of taking this item up right now out of order, raise your cards and keep them up. Thank you, you may take your cards down. All those opposed, raise your cards and keep them up. I knew it. I got 54. Okay, keep your cards up, we're going to try a visual count, and hold them way up because we're quite a ways off in our count. Oh, no.
I don't have the glasses.
No. All right, you may take your cards now. We have a very substantial disagreement here in the number, and in my mind, it's too close to call. So, we're going to take a written ballot on whether you want to vote on this. I'm, I'm sorry, unless you want to take another vote on what was just before you. I don't want to ca- you know what, I'll do a standing count, I'll do a standing count. Let's do that and see if that works and if, I'll apologize if I'm way off and get my glasses fixed, but, okay. So, the motion before you, that's a good idea, not to do the written ballot, let's just do a standing count. If you are in favor of the motion to take this article up right now, please stand and remain standing until counted. All right, what do you got? Huh? Right. Where exactly on, on that one? All right, my mic, you can, let me see, was anybody counting or not? Were we counting it? You were, okay. All right, you're going to have to trust me, we'll see how close this one is. All right, take your seat, and all those opposed to the motion, please stand and remain standing until counted. Uh-oh. Oh, my God, okay, all right, you're right. All right, thank you, you may be seated. Both of your counters have the motion failing by a substantial number, given the two-thirds requirement particularly. So, she was closer than I was, but not by much, anyway. I mean, I apologize for thinking about a written ballot, that was, that was quite, it was, it was a margin of at least 15 to 20 votes that, that led to the, the motion failing. So, we are now back at
Article six.
Article, Article two we've done, you've heard who your offices are. We are at Article three. Let's see, to vote on, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you, we took care of that. Four, five. Article six, "To see if the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate $50,000 for the RSU five withdrawal committee. This article is no longer one that can be passed, given the referendum result that occurred yesterday." So, I am going to ask you to vote it down. If you vote it up, it's not going to have any effect.
I move zero.
You move zero, okay. We'll have a motion to appropriate zero under Article six, made by Jeff, seconded by Sarah. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. To raise zero. All right, Article seven. "To see if the town will vote to appropriate $195,587 from undesignated funds to correct the clerical error for the budget year 2015." May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Jeff, seconded by Sarah, that we pass Article seven as written. The note under that article says, "During the 2015 commitment, the figures for appropriated funds and raised funds were inadvertently switched, causing a shortfall in the town's tax commitment of $195,587. The audit this year reflects the use of undesignated funds for this shortfall." Is there discussion? Alan?
Mr. Moderator, Alan Pirington Dayroad. One question I need to have Jeff clarify. At the beginning of the meeting, he said that if we were voting to approve the articles, we're looking at a 5.9% increase over last year's rate. And I'm just wondering, does that include, we have a bond, Article 21, for $474,000. We have Article 30 for 1.1 million. Does that include those if those were passed?
It does not, and there would be no payment due on those this year. So, what, what I was reflecting is just what would be paid this year. So, those are not included in that calculation. Because we, we don't know what the payments would be yet or anything, so, and the payments wouldn't start until next year on either of those.
Jeff, you're going to get closer to the mic.
The budget increase, the increase that I mentioned, is only what's affecting this year, and those two articles are, would not affect this year's budget because there would be no payments due until next year and would not be, not be affecting taxes until next year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions, comments, discussion on Article seven?
On Article seven, the, with regard to the clerical error, it was an issue that was discovered during this year's audit. We, the Board of Selectmen was made aware of it, I believe, in late January or early February. And as stated in, in the note below the article, it was a matter of taking the wrong number and filling it into an equation, and the two numbers were off by $195,587. So, in effect, you, last year, last year's taxes didn't go up as much as they were supposed to, and right, exactly, and, and, and so it will affect this year's taxes, which, when I mentioned the tax impact, I mentioned about half of the taxed impact is going to be related to that amount of money. And then, the rest of it is the rest of the budget.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, Chuck? Get ready, please.
Jeff, quick question for this. All right, we, we understand that the undesignated funds is where it has to come out of.
Yeah.
But, in, in the past, we always tried to keep a certain percentage in the undesignated funds in case something like this occurred, okay? You're going to have to replace this in undesignated funds to keep that percentage back up to where we were trying to get it to. How will you replace this in the undesignated funds?
So, in the last few years, we have been trying to increase undesignated funds to a level so that we don't have to take tax anticipation notes before our commitment. And we haven't reached that point. This set us back. Typically, what happens is, any unspent funds from, from articles other than fire department and public works will typically lapse back into undesignated funds. That amount's usually fairly small. We also have what's called an overlay, which is a percentage over the amount of the commitment. I think recently we've used two or two and a half percent. That's used to cover abatements or any, or unpaid taxes and things like that. And if, if not all of that is used, that will, that will also stay in the undesignated funds. And that's typically how those will be boosted. And, so this year, it hurt us this year, our undesignated fund balance fell by about $100,000. It's, I believe, around 700, it's, it's 781,000 as of January 1st this year. And eventually, we want it to be, I believe, somewhere in the 1.3, 1.4 million range. So, we, it's been a long process, but rather than try to hit everybody all at once and do a, do a taxation to raise that up, we've been trying to do it over the years, just letting it build up on its own. Do you remember how much approximately we paid in interest on the tax anticipation note last year? Yeah. Yeah, less than $1,000 for our tax anticipation note. So, even though we have to do it, it's not a, a heavy impact, but eventually, we'd like to get away from having to do that.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion or comments on Articles? Let me get back to it, here we go. Article seven, and the motion before you, which is to pass the article as written. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article eight, "To see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for administration expenses. Both the Budget Committee and the Selectmen recommend the amount of $352,409 by transferring $98,762 from designated funds. Building permits, $11,050. Electrical permits, $4,0875. Plumbing permits, $5,0475. Delinquent tax interest, $36,577." Delinquent tax interest, $36,577. Vehicle registrations, $14,000. Tax exempt reimbursement, $18,551. Town clerk fees, $6,877. Miscellaneous revenues, $1,357. And raise, $253,647. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Articles eight as written. Comments, questions, and discussion? Alan?
Mr. Moderator, I think it would be beneficial to the townspeople here today that we, there would be some discussion from both, well, the Selectmen on Budget Committee, what the variance is on this from the previous year, and if there was an increase or decrease, where specifically did that affect?
Thank you. Do we have that number from last year's budget on this administrative expenses?
So, the increase that, that we're asking for this year is a $24,500 increase in this line, approximately 7.5%. The majority of the, there are two, I believe there are two items that are driving the increase. Let's see, I'm looking for, I see, I know there's one, one major one that's, that's in, driving the increase, and we are asking that our codes official be moved from a part-time position to a full-time position. At the beginning of the budget process, the codes official came to us and requested this due to the fact that he is having a hard time completing all of his, all of his work in the time that's given him. In the last year, the, the amount of monies that were brought in from permitting went from somewhere around $8,000 last year to over $20,000 this year. If you go back and look over the last few years, there were, it was around 8,000, around 10,000, around 15,000. So, even in the higher year, higher years, we still brought in over 20,000 in fees from codes this year. I believe there's two reasons for that. One, the major reason is we've had a lot more permits being taken out. And the other reason is we, we did it at the request of the codes officer, we did do an adjustment on the fee schedule, to make it more accurate to what, to what's being used when they, when the permits are being taken out. And so, that, that accounts for, I would say, close to 70 to 80% of the increase in this line. I'm looking for any other major...
Yeah, you gotta get closer to the mic.
I'm looking for, if there's any other major lines that increased as well.
Somebody on the Budget Committee? See? Yes, sir.
Yeah, also, one of the extra increases, I believe, was, you have an extra week's pay this year due to...
Yeah, oh, thank you, yes. On, on all the, all the salaries show an increase without any raises, and we have, we have put in, for a, in this budget, we put in for a small raise pool as well, but this week is a 53-week year, so, in order to cover that, we've had to put a little extra in for that as well.
Thank you.
I noticed that there is a reduction on town reports printing. Last year, we had a budget of $2,200, and we expended $2185, and this, next year, we're expending zero. How can that be?
We moved that to telecommunications budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I had that same question.
Now, get closer.
All right.
To the mic.
Not to you? Okay. I had that same question. I know you, I saw you moved it to telecommunications. Does, does that mean there're not gonna be paper anymore?
No, there's still, there's still gonna be paper.
So, they're not actually like, okay, got it. And then, the other one that I saw in here that went down a good amount to zero, is the grounds, but it looked like maybe some other areas. You guys moved things between, how you categorize things, is that correct?
The grounds was moved to public works. The public works has taken over that, it had been contracted.
Okay, so that's a $5,000 reduction.
Yeah.
So, it's just reallocated. So, those 6,000 are actually still in the budget, they're somewhere else, right? So, the other thing that I saw that went up, and I'm going to guess it's because it's a presidential election year, is the election expenses went up a good amount.
Yes. There, yes, there were several reasons why that, but one of the major reasons is gonna be, it's a, it's a, it's a presidential election year, also because it's, the June is, June is also a primary, the RSU is not gonna be covering the cost of our June election, where if there's no primary, the RSU covers the cost of that election.
Okay. And can you tell us what the, it looked like health insurance went up about 8%, is that what you guys saw in an increase?
Yes.
Some went up 1%, and some went up 8%, so I'm guessing it's maybe different people took it.
And part of it was due to budgeting errors last year, getting the numbers quite right. They should, yeah, typically, you should see that they go up together, but there were, there were some numbers that were put in incorrectly or something last year, so that's why they don't, you don't see the same jump.
They're not moving together. But roughly 8% was what you guys saw for an insurance increase this year for the...
I believe, I believe that's roughly what the increase was, yeah.
For the staff, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jeff DeWitt.
You're gonna get really close. Hi, Jeff. You got it really close.
Close enough?
A little closer.
Closer?
Yeah.
Okay. Jeff, I just had a question about the increase for the anticipated extra hours for the code enforcement. Is that in anticipation of extending the hours? Has that decision been made to do that, or is that another issue altogether?
It's an anticipation. We, we did not, we were not gonna make the decision until after...
Okay, so you haven't, that, this is in, all right, so we have another time to address that. I guess my...
No, this is the time to address it. We, we were not gonna make the decision until a vote's been taken.
Okay, so, first off, you're voting to see if you will raise funds to allow for the extended hours?
Right, and, and the, the actual decision is a decision of the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
Whether to change the position to full-time.
Understood.
Yeah.
And then, one other follow-up. I'm, I'm in the building construction industry, and I've seen pretty much a 30-year period of building in Durham, and many of you know that there's been times when it was crazy here, but we've just come off a time where there hasn't been a lot of activity. So, I guess another question is, if we do this, will the funds come strictly from building permits? And if we don't have that kind of year, where will the money come from?
Get closer, Jeff.
The, as...
No, no, I meant Jeff Winkman, sorry.
Any, any funds from, from the fees would go to this position, but they do, it does not cover it 100%. If we saw a decrease in the permits and the amount of work that was needed to, to complete the job and so on, we would have to reevaluate the position again.
Okay, and, and another thing that I would, you know, I can only speak for myself, but if there's any way building contractors within the community can contribute to maybe help so that he doesn't have so many hours, or it doesn't become, you know, a burden, I'm willing to do it. Because I guess, anybody that knows me, I guess I come from the libertarian side, and if we can keep things to a minimum so that everybody's served by it, and that would be my, I'd like that. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Yes, ma'am.
Jeannie Costigan Rangdale. I just need a little help with the, maybe some simple math. So, what we're asking for is increa, you can't hear me. Increasing administrative costs by 24,000 for the position that is only pulling in 20,000.
The, let's, so, the, the position that, we would be raising the salary by $10,000, and then, there would be the benefits that would go with, with full-time employment, looking for that line, which would be about approximately 5,500. So, 15,000, 15,000 to 16,000 of that 24,000 is covered in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Pull that link, just twist it down a little, get really close.
Is that good?
Yep.
Jane Rice Bowie Hill. So, I just wanted to make it a point that it's just not the salary increase, there's also benefits involved, and then, is main purs also affected?
I do not...
For this person?
Main purs would not be affected by this person, I do not believe. However, if main purs is not affected, then social security would be affected.
Okay, so it's just not 10-6. The other piece, and I ask every single year, health insurance, what is the town paying for our town employees? What percentage?
We're paying 80, 80%. The employees are paying 20. We did do, we did do an evaluation again this year, comparing us to other towns in the area and other towns of similar size, and found that we were in the middle, if not to the lower, the lower end of what was being provided. We also did a, an evaluation if, if we changed plans to a higher deductible plan, and then funded, funded some of that deductible, and it ended up showing that we'd actually, if for the first year, we'd have to pay more to help fund, to help fund the cost to cover the difference. And in the, in future years, it might save us a little, but that was all dependent on how much of that fund was used. So, we did do some evaluations this year on it, and, but we have not made any changes to the plan as of right now.
Okay, thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes, ma'am.
Heather Roy Hollowell Road. I would just like to say that as a person who has utilized the previous code enforcement officer to the current code enforcement officer, the previous code enforcement officer would, if anybody else has had experience, would know this, say, if I'm not there within 24 hours, you can keep going. And as a person who was doing a lot of work on our own, we actually needed, we needed the opinion of a professional to say, this is safe, or this is not safe, what you're doing. Paul has been a phenomenal resource for myself, my family, where we are in the process of doing an addition, as well as a home occupation, which I did with the previous code enforcement officer as well. So, I would just like to speak on behalf of Paul and say that I completely support raising his position to a full-time position, because he has been an extremely important resource for myself personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Ann Toragrosa, in addition to being just a citizen here today, I'm also the vice chair of the planning board.
Closer to the mic.
Vice chair of the planning board, and I've worked closely with Paul, as well as the former code officer. I also am a municipal attorney, I work quite closely with code officers from a bunch of different municipalities, and Paul is one of the good ones. He is professional, he brings a lot to Durham. Earlier, we heard about how Durham is growing, and it is. In the past 10 or 15 years, we've seen Durham grow exponentially, and that includes a lot of buildings, it includes a lot of home occupations, it includes a lot of different folks coming in, and I trust the Selectmen and our code officer that if he needs more time to deliver the level of service that this town needs, I agree with providing that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Alice.
First off, I, I agree with this, I'm undoubtedly gonna vote for this, but I wanna get a bottom line. Jeff, municipally, what is our tax increase expected to be for this year? Is it 5% you're saying?
From, from the municipal side, we can expect to see five, almost 6%. And, but that does not include what the school's gonna come in at.
Right, which we assume is gonna be someplace around 2, under the assumption that they don't vote it up.
Yeah, but, but that will, that will affect the bottom, the mill rate will go up approximately 1.03.
Okay.
Due to the municipal budget.
Okay, so, but we're talking a 5% increase in our taxes?
6.
6% increase in our taxes?
Correct.
Okay, I have no problem with this, simply because we haven't given salary increases to our employees for a very long period of time, simply because we couldn't afford it, but now, I mean, it's just logical that they are entitled to increases. I also have no problem with code enforcement being increased, but we have been complaining on other articles, just remember, we're talking about a 6% increase in our taxes, after the multiple increases that we've had for the past four years, five years. And when you're considering these other articles, just know that there seriously are people in this community that can't afford the taxes that are being billed now, and definitely cannot afford another 6% over the increases that we've already had.
Thank you, Alice. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, can I just reiterate that that 5 to 6% is only the municipal side, does not include the bonds that won't affect us this year, but will affect us next year, and that has nothing to do with the RSU. So, in reality, our taxes are going up way more than 5 or 6%.
Yes, I think that is correct for everything that's been stated. Any other comments or discussion on Article eight, and the motion before you, which is to pass the article as written? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article nine, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for animal control, both the Budget Committee and the Selectmen recommend the amount of $13,043 by transferring $129 from the designated fund balance, animal control, and raising $12,914. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article nine as written. Comments, discussion, questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 10, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for assessing, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the amount of $20,050, which is to be raised. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved, and Sarah moved it, I need a second, Will Simon seconds it, under Article 10, to pass the article as written. Any comments, discussions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 11, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for cemeteries, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the amount of $3,850, which is to be raised. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 11 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion carries. Article 12, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for conservation, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the sum of $2,150 by transferring that amount from the designated fund balance for the recreation fund. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 12 as written. Any comments or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 13, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for social and community service agencies, the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the sum of $3,000 by raising that amount, with donations to be made to Community Concepts for $500, Western Main Transportation for $500, LACO for $500, Andersgård and Home Health $500, Seniors Plus $500, and Life Flight $500. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 13 as written. Any comments or discussions? Yes, ma'am. Really close to that mic. Put it, you can turn, you can pick it up a little so that you can, yeah.
Yes, hello.
Yep.
My name is Elizabeth Haffey, I'm with Community Concepts, and I just wanted to say that we're happy to provide the town of Durham with emergency fuel assistance, transportation of elders and veterans to medical appointments, and children and family services. Your contribution of $500 helps us give over $80,000... Your contribution of $500 helps us give over $80,000 in services to your community, and we would very much appreciate your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments on Article 13 and the motion before you? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor of the motion, raise your card. Thank you. All those opposed, motion passes. Article 14, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate for the Eureka Community Center, both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the sum of $5,436 by transferring $624 from the designated fund balance from Eureka Rentals and raising $4,812. May I have a motion, please? It's been moved and seconded that we pass Article 14 as written. Any comments, discussion? Yes, sir.
The flooring in the Eureka Center is wiped out. It's a vinyl composition tile, and there's a small group of citizens that are going to be donating to installing a hardwood or a wood floor from local?
Hold it a little closer.
Sorry. Citizens are going to be donating a wood floor from local timber and trying to work with local mills to have that milled for the installation, which should be donated as well. So if anyone has any ideas on that, approach me after the meeting.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or discussion on Article 14 and the motion before you, which is to pass the article as written? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 15, to see what sum of money the town will vote to raise and/or appropriate from the Eureka Community Center Fundraising Fund to reimburse the emergency fund which was utilized to repair the sinkhole at the Eureka Center. Both the Selectmen and Budget Committee recommend the sum of $1,650 by transferring that amount from the designated fund balance for the Eureka fundraising to the emergency fund. Any, may I have a motion, please? Been moved and seconded that we pass Article 15 as written. Any comments or discussion? Are you gonna, did you want to say something, sir?
No.
No? Okay. Seeing, yes?
Is there a reason we didn't use our public works to fix the sinkhole?
They weren't, not as available at the time. However, our Public Works Director did go out and do the inspection on it and, between him and the codes officer, to kind of determine what needed to be done. But we, at that point, it was early on in our new Public Works Director's job and just wasn't available to, to do it at the time.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments on Article 15 and the motion before you to pass that article as written? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor of the motion, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries. Article 16.